I'd like to call to order the August 24th meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with approval of the minutes of August 10.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Extinctions? Okay, a minute's approved. I agree. It was very good. Okay, correspondence? Any correspondence from staff?
Uh, nothing from staff, no.
Okay. Well, we move on to the Transportation Commission report. Did you guys actually meet?
The Transportation Commission did meet two weeks ago, Thursday. We spent a fair amount of time talking about Complete Streets.
Oh, interesting.
And one of the messages was that we've been looking at complete street policies across a range of jurisdictions. Typically, complete street policies include 10 points, and I thought it might be worthwhile sort of running through those 10. First would be a vision statement, of course, a vision of how and why the community wants to complete its streets. Two, a statement that it includes all users and modes. It specifies that users includes pedestrians, bicyclists, transit passengers of all ages and abilities, as well as trucks, buses, and automobiles. Three, the title, the section "Network," that is, encourages connectivity. Four, talking about jurisdictions, it is understood by all agencies to cover all streets. So jurisdiction, all agencies. Five, I guess, a statement of intent applies to both new and retrofit projects, including design, planning, maintenance, and operations for the entire right-of-way. Exceptions. If there are to be exceptions, it needs to be a policy, a specific set of clear procedures and guidelines on a high level of approval to make exceptions. Talking about design directs the use of latest and best design criteria and guidelines, all recognizing need for flexibility. And that leads into the next one. Context sensitivity directs the complete street solutions will be, will complement the context of the community. Performance measures, how are we doing? And a statement about...
You were, excuse me, Joel, you said number five, statement number 10, and then you said the next one. Do you mean inside the statement of 10, or what's number six?
I, I can't...
What's the number six?
Six, number six, a statement of exceptions. I'll hand this to you in a second if you want it. And any phasing, specific statement of next steps in implementation. Now, these are, these are all the 10 things seem to come up again and again in terms of various jurisdictions' complete streets policies.
Was that on the Complete Streets website?
Um, yes, I believe it comes from there.
Because I remember seeing it somewhere, and I started to read all these different policies for different jurisdictions, and thought, well, this might be a little too far ahead of us.
Yeah.
But, so this is good, yeah, knowing what the kind of common ground is.
If I'd been a little bit sharper, I would have had some copies of this, but I'll pass it around for people to look at.
Okay.
And the next meeting of the Transportation Commission is scheduled on the 22nd, that's a month from now. It'll be in this room, Thursday, the 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay, so probably in time for the second meeting in September.
Yeah.
We'll get a report.
Right.
So, is there discussion in Transportation Commission about developing a policy? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Yes, that is, that is where this is heading. I also pointed out to the Transportation Commission that the Planning and Zoning Commission is very interested in this process, and less will, I believe, be meeting with us.
At our next meeting.
At our next meeting. Less promised to talk about that now at my work.
Great, thank you, Joel. Okay, so, anybody have any comments, questions? Okay.
It could take up the next year or two.
It'll, it's a big topic.
I think we're gonna be, I hope, we're gonna be dealing with it more effectively as the years go by.
Right, well, it seems like...
So I doubt we need to solve it tonight.
But I thought after finding out what Complete Streets is, looking at sample policies, if, if the direction is to go in that way, would be a, a good read at some point in the future. Okay, well, open microphone. We've come to the point in the agenda where members of the public may speak to the commission regarding items, matters that are not on the agenda nor currently pending before Planning and Zoning. Is any...
Victoria?
No, not interested. Okay, well, a reminder to anybody who might be listening that you can come down and speak your mind for, on, on subjects that might be of interest, relevant to us and are not on our agenda.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to assume a moment of the open microphone and just share, do a little share. You know that lots of constructions going on on Third, and I have some images here that I think you may find interesting, and if you'd pass one over to Catherine as well. It's, this is really far enough, you have one extra, yeah.
I've never seen such infrastructure in Moscow in my lifetime. This is really an intriguing project going on, and so I thought you might enjoy just seeing the pictures there. On, at Third and Hayes, they're actually going, they've gone down at 13 feet into the ground, which is a fur piece for, you know, we've all seen a sewer line put in our water line, but we have sewer and water and storm all happening on Third, crossing each other, and you can see some of the big, well, if you look down at the bottom, that historic stuff, that's old, old manholes that have been taken up, that used, were made in place out of brick, and why that one didn't fall apart when it was pulled out today, I don't know, but you see...
What are they doing with them?
Well, just throw away.
You don't want to use them as landscape elements?
Well, we talked, I talked about with one of the contractors about it, the, you
can see the big black pipe there. In the second row of pictures, you see these guys standing around, that, that's a valve that Moscow is putting in, clearly development's going out to the west, or out to the east, excuse me, and so this is a 24-inch cast iron pipe. That, that valve, according to the contractor, is worth 50 grand, that, and, I mean, talk about big. These guys have to, they had two cones out there trying to lift it up. Anyway, I just thought you'd be interested in seeing the kind of intensity that's going on, on this, this development. It's, it's quite exciting, and I know people keep right, coming by and saying, oh, my God, I just can't stand this, it's, I'll be glad when this construction's over, and I'm, my view is, this is what our heart and our valves of our system and our cities all about, and to me, this sounds good, because if we can afford to do this kind of infrastructure work, that means that we're not...
Stagnant.
Yeah, we're not stagnant. Something's happening, and to me, all these guys out there working all summer have been a real exciting sound rather than one that, that I'm, I'm hating, and I just thought that you might enjoy just seeing a couple of the, I realize these are very tiny pictures, but...
The valves, though, is huge.
They're, it's, and, and they've had, as they've tested the things, you know, we were standing around, I'm, I've gotten to, I've spent too much time as a retired guy, I can afford to stand around and watch them, and I realize that most of you are, are busy trying to make a living, so I thought maybe you'd appreciate what a person can do. As they were testing one of the lines, they put big balloons in there and put on a certain amount of pressure to see if it'll hold, and they blew out one of the balloons as we were standing around one of these big manholes. We thought we were shot. I thought the contractor just jumped, he's a big tough guy, all these guys are tough guys, and I, I thought he was gonna fall over as this balloon popped out of the, out of the pipe. But anyway, it's, it's pretty exciting just to see this level of, of infrastructure, 24-inch pipes.
Water line.
And I understand, I don't know if we're staying with cast iron or not, but this big valve is, is still a cast iron valve, which I, I found just slightly surprising. I didn't know if there'd be other materials that could use. Anyway, it's, I thought, I thought you might just enjoy the report from the action in our town.
Yeah, it's quite a project. I've been, it's on my running route, so I've been running at the edge of it for the last...
Yeah, you could be, feel sorry for yourself. Of course, a park is, all the, all along the way, weeds are growing and the people are running, my, the grass on the edge of my place is just a total mess, because people have to walk around, so that, but I figured, what the heck, life will go on next year.
Okay.
And we'll, who knows, we might even have water next year.
Oh, so Victoria would like to come up and speak, so.
I don't really have a comment, but, other than the sewer line in my alley is seven feet down, because I have a replacement ceiling, it's seven feet down, it's pretty interesting. Last time I watched it on TV, you were asking...
Oh, you just need to state your name.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lily, Moscow. I don't really have a comment, but you were asking about the sidewalk program last time, and I did the sidewalk program. So, I made it, I don't remember what your questions were, but I, I did half of the walk out front, half of my walk, only did the bad parts. I wish I'd done the whole thing now, but I only did the bad parts. So I did six squares, and this was 2013, and it was $876.90, and Knox Concrete did it. I was very happy with the city, I did it on the city program. I was very happy with it, because I don't want to go out and find a contractor and figure out whether that's good concrete or not, and if it's up to snuff or not, because Jason was out there, a city engineer, out there taking care of that, and Kenneth Lilly and all those guys, and so I was very happy with it. My neighbor down the street did, he's on a corner, he did one side, and we'll do the other side later.
Oh, that's great.
But, but anyway, I remember what your questions were, except that you wanted to know something about the sidewalk program, and I was...
Well, I think it was just to let people know that it was a resource available, yeah.
It was very painless, very easy, you get a two-year warranty on the materials. I didn't have to worry about anything, I knew it was done right, you know, and, and it should be a little cheaper, because the way, if you, I know if you have to bring cement in yourself for just yours, it's pricey, but, you know, they did one down the street, and then they came up and did mine, and then they went over to the, over some neighbor over there and did theirs, and it was cheaper.
That's great.
So I was happy.
And so they blasted out the old sidewalk for you and everything?
Blasted out, they took a backhoe to it.
Okay.
And some sledgehammering for where mine was, because I didn't do the whole walk. But, anyway, I was very happy with it.
Great, well, thank you for sharing that. It's good to talk. Okay, so, item six on our agenda, Mike, I think you're gonna tell us what's going on with the 2016 citizen survey. Has it been back to council for another discussion after historic preservation's discussion last week, or?
I think they're probably still talking about it. You know, you recall last time we went through maybe the last four citizen surveys, and every couple of years, we put out a citizen survey, and we're able to ask a couple of questions on that survey, and the year is, is coming up for 2016 citizen survey, and they're starting to plan that, and we thought we'd all get a jump on it and start thinking about questions that the, the commission could potentially ask, and, you know, in the time between that last meeting and this meeting, we've got an email from administration who said that they've restructured the, the citizen survey. So typically, we have standard city service questions that we ask each survey, and those are usually items one through 14, and then we have items 28 through 47, which are demographic questions, and 48, 49 are open-ended questions, and then reserved for commissions are questions 15 through 27. And so, apparently, in, in recent years, the commission and task force's questions have gotten a little bit longer. You know, if you recall, a few citizen surveys ago, they used to let commissions ask four questions, and then at some point, I think it was 2010, they reduced that to two, so we could just ask two questions per commission. And so, you know, with the two questions, I think if you recall our, our last citizen survey, we had maybe six, seven questions within one table that, that we asked, so maybe we're culprits of that to a certain extent, but apparently, it's, they, they're seeing some type of correlation between the response rate and the length of the survey, and so they've been trying to keep it to eight pages, so people would, you know, will, will fill it out, and will get a higher response rate, but they've apparently reduced the font size, and there's some concern that the change has begun to affect the response rates in the survey, and so what they're planning on doing is to break it up, so they'll do an annual survey. It's just that one year, and it'll be all even-numbered years, they're gonna ask kind of the demographic questions, and then the next year, in odd, odd years, they're going to ask, allow the opportunity for commissions to, to ask their questions, and so what that means for us is, we're being an even year, they're gonna start with the, the demographic questions this year, and then, so next year, we'll be asking the commission questions. So, really didn't have a whole lot of discussion, just got the, the email saying that, that the change has been made, and so we talked a little bit about it at Historic Preservation Commission, and, you know, the commission had a little concern with maybe the, maybe the response rates, knowing, you know, citizens knowing that you're gonna come up with a bunch of commission questions may be a little bit lower than the standard demographic quality of life questions that you typically get, so, and then, you know, to a certain extent, sometimes, like, with ADUs, and I don't know how much other commissions utilize the demographic data, but for us, you know, if you recall the ADU questions about, you know, who would like to have one on their property, and would you allow your neighbors to have one, you know, we, we had taken a, a look at the breakdown and all that, and the quadrants, and then the age groups, and, and, you know, and that, I think, helped us a little bit in, in determining who these respondents were, that were, you know, giving us such good feedback about the ADU questions, and so I know that we use the demographic data, and so there was a little bit of concern with taking that out of there, and so, I don't know if we have a say in this or not, I was just, you know, reporting that, that that's the direction administration has, has gone with the citizen survey, so.
Well, it'd be nice to have a say in it, because, at least in the case of historic preservation, and I think with this commission as well, and probably others, we had done a goal-setting session, and we crafted our questions for this year on the survey to get information to pair up with the goals, and now we have to wait a whole year, and so it, you know, before we even get the information, and, and I guess I have a concern that there would be, that people would, just looking at commission questions might tend to not fill out the survey, and it would be, I guess I would advocate, if it's possible, for half the commissions being included one year and half the next in, in the mix, to cut down the length, but still give a, you know, kind of a integrated survey rather than a segregated one. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but that's how I feel about it.
It's hard to, it's hard to understand how, in a survey of that length, two questions are going to give you much in terms of meaningful data to really do much with, and so it, it seems like if we had even every other year with more questions, that we could craft better.
Well, it seems to me that, given the limitation of two questions, we've, we've managed to cram more detail into each of those two.
Well, for example, with historic preservation, one of our goals is to update our tour system, and, and so we asked media delivery questions, would you prefer, you know, a brochure, would you prefer an actual living guide, like walking nails, or would you, or would you prefer some, you know, an audio, or, you know, and so, as an example, because that helps, then that information helps us figure out where do we take our grant money and, and spend it, you know, how do we use it? So I think, I think it can be really, if you do a good job of crafting the questions, and, and they're paired up with goals, seems to me like it provides really good information if you can, you know, really spend time thinking about the questions, but...
Do you think, have you, have you heard people in the administration talk about, do you think we get a better or worse response than, than just typical questions that come to us all the time? I mean, I'm getting to the point where I don't want to answer anybody's question, because you get somebody calling you, well, I just have a few questions to ask you, are you gonna vote? Are you blah, blah, blah? And, and boom, no, I don't want to, and when, after I voted, you'll know how I voted, and then you should think about that, but I'm not going to tell you. So I've wondered if we're, do we get better response? You'd like to think in a little town like this, we might get a better response, but I'm not sure that we do.
Apparently, it's, it's been, I haven't seen the figures, but, you know, the, from the email, it sounds like it's declining slightly. You know, we, every year, or every two years, when we send the citizen survey out, we send it to 1,200 households, and then, you know, we're still getting a response rate that's statistically valid, so, you know, we're still getting the data, and so I, I don't know how much of a decline we're seeing and, and how much of a concern it is, but obviously, administration seems to think that, you know, there's some correlation between the, the length of the response.
You do, you just wonder what's the best way. I'm thinking of, of course, my mind's going to our water summit, that some of our citizens have so dutifully provided that water summit for us here, and then you think the people that come to one of those events are likely to want to respond. On the other hand, that's a specific group that is interested, and I suspect what we want, if we could get it, would be a broader view of citizen response, and yet, you see what I'm, what I'm getting at, there are, there are times when you might find, you might get a higher response from a group of people, but then they might be, they may not be a generic group, and you just, I mean, it, I don't think it's a terrible big issue with us, because we, I think we do a pretty good job in Moscow in general, and I think people are pretty happy with the way of living in Moscow, but I don't, I don't know, you know, I'm just, I'm beginning, I'm really, I've never gotten one myself, so that 1,200 people's never touched me, apparently.
I've neither, yep.
I've got one, maybe the first year I was here.
Thirty-five years, huh?
I said, I received one maybe the first or second year I was here, and they do a good job of sending a postcard before, saying that you're gonna receive one, and kind of following up with you. It's, it's much like the census, you know, every, when you get the census or the population estimates survey, so they send you, you know, they flood you with postcards to make sure that you fill it out, so.
And if you're interested, when you go to the city website, the citizen survey 2014 has collected all the data since 2002, and Mike's talking about it, and it talks about the response rates, and it has everything that you're kind of wondering about, and I think the things that we think are valid, especially because we know this is a transient community, too, to maybe ask some questions about how, because you could, I've watched you make your goals and then craft the questions around your goals, so that you can move forward. So I think what you're, maybe that hasn't been communicated to administration, maybe that's the reason.
That's what I keep, this is the second commission I've sat in in a week, where I've wondered where, how do we get that message to them?
Yeah, so I would, I would ask that question, because it has, it talks about everything in this report, so for them, I think if you're looking at it from administrative place, it makes sense, with the decision they're making.
Right, but it doesn't for the commission.
Yes, but there might not be enough, what I'm wondering about is all the other questions that the commissions, what they base their questions on, you know, I mean, I've watched you carefully consider what you're doing, I don't, I haven't been to the others to know, and maybe that, maybe it's worth talking to some of the other commissions for that.
Can I come?
Yes.
Because I'm on a commission, you know, and can, I think that they are very careful about picking issues, if we talk about recycling or water issues, and I was on ours the last time, and I don't like the idea of going two years down the road, I mean, yeah, I don't like to disconnect it. I'm wondering if they could send out demographics, and maybe three months later, follow up with the commission part, so you have a part A, part B, but you keep it in the same timeframe, because putting them apart doesn't make any sense to me. Demographics probably lead it to, to the next, to the next survey.
There's 40 pages in this, in the, the report from the 24th conservative that condenses all of 2002 to now. I mean, there's tons of information, but I think they've looked at it, and they're seeing, like what Mike said, they're seeing relationships, and so they're like, you know what, we don't really need to ask this much anymore, we've ascertained enough information, but maybe the commissions need more information, so that might be the, everything Mike is saying is right, because it's, I mean, when you start looking at these graphs, they've got plenty of information.
Well, I'm not sure who to contact exactly to ask, you know...
The administrative team, I would contact.
Well, it'd be Jen Fifner, who sent out the email, so, you know, I, I think that as chair of Planning and Zoning, you could certainly, you know, if the rest of the commission has maybe some concerns about that, then you could contact her.
Well, I'm certainly gonna do it in the name of preservation, because we did, so...
Sure.
If people agree in this case, too, I'll...
Absolutely.
I'll, I'll do both, and just, I mean...
I remember getting in the mail the survey and the results, so I remember also getting information about, you remember getting that in the mail that showed the results? They kind of encapsulated some of the information that they had taken or been...
I don't remember getting the results, no.
I got one years ago, and I filled it out in detail, but that's, I didn't get the results, that was years ago.
Yeah, the only way I've seen the results is when Mike reports back to us, as we're, you know, using it.
Just go to the website.
Yeah, so that's good to know. So what's the...
Where are they?
Yeah.
Under programs, under the programs.
Yeah, if you just go to, on the, the top, you'll have Departments tab, and then you go down to Administration, and then it's just on the bottom left of Administration, has all the citizen surveys.
Yeah, so, yeah, a lot of times, there's a lot of information in there, and, unless you make it your job to go through the city website, it's not gonna...
There's a lot of pages, I mean, there's a lot of information.
Right, 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 I mean, yeah, speaking of the Transportation Commission report, for example, I mean, the multi-modal transportation. Okay, so, any other comments on citizen survey? All right, if I have your permission, I'll go ahead and contact Administration and ask, and tell them my concerns, and ask them if there are any alternatives, maybe, you know, at least breaking it up every other year or something. I'm maybe, you know, at least breaking it up every other year or something. So then, Mike is going to talk about non-conformities, a draft ordinance for non-conformities.
So I, I think that we had gone over this once previously, just to talk about kind of some of the issues that we experienced with non-conformities in the city. And these could be anywhere from maybe a garage, a structure that doesn't meet setback requirements that be declared non-conforming, or the more common occurrence, which is either a duplex that's in a single-family zone that would have issues with, you know, it never used to really be a problem up until about 2008, when the, we had the financial collapse and the banks started looking more towards their investments. And, and so they, you know, have issues with lending on properties where they can't recoup their investment. So if they have a duplex and it burns down, you have to build a use that's allowed in the zone, you know, in this case it'd be a single family. And so a lot of these non-conforming uses are put in a category where you can only get maybe a cash sale or a cash transaction because banks won't want to make that investment. So we, we had looked through kind of the, the existing non-conformity section of the code, which is in chapter one of the zoning code. And we talk about a lot of things in there, you know, goes some intent statements, non-conforming lots of record, what happens when we have a lot that doesn't meet the minimum lot size or width in the underlying zoning district. We don't run into real, you know, any real issues with this one. It, it really just says that you're, you know, even if your lot doesn't meet the minimum lot size or width, you're still entitled to build a single-family dwelling. So this one has worked pretty, pretty well, and we did update a portion of that, if you recall, in 2014. It's actually a different section of the code, but it kind of relates to this, where we had the number of lots that were, just had frontage on alleys that were, we had an issue with even allowing a, a single-family dwelling to be, to be built on those. And then, one, we don't really deal with a whole lot. The majority of our, our uses of land are in conformance, so, you know, use of land, maybe it's agricultural operation in a residential zone. This is really kind of been, we don't really have too many of those areas, but the ones that we do have have been resolved when we did the urban ag amendment a few years ago, which allows, you know, some smaller scale agricultural operations in town. And so I don't know that there is a, a non-conforming use that we currently have in the, in the city. But more, you know, non-conforming structures are more common because you have a lot of those garages, accessory structures that are built right up to the rear property line. Maybe the whole design of the lot and the structures on it, you know, revolves around the house, and, and that's the most logical location, is pushing it as far back. We've relaxed some of the set-top requirements for some of those structures, so if you're 200 square feet or less in size, you really don't have any setbacks on the rear property line. But if you're over 200, you have a five-foot setback, and, and then we relaxed the height as well for the ADU ordinance when we, when we saw that. And so we, we've resolved quite a few of those, but you do have probably a large number of larger than 200 square foot structures that are right up to the property line. And so the existing non-conforming language, you know, pretty, limits you quite a bit to what you can, can't do with that. And then we have non-conforming uses of structures or structures in premises in combination. So that's the duplex in the single-family zone that I'm referring to, and it, it goes through kind of all the restrictions in there. And then we have a section, talks about repairs and maintenance at the end, what you can, can't do, you know, standard routine maintenance of a, a structure is allowed even if it's non-conforming. So that's really the structures of our non-conform, the structure of our non-conformity section. We always, we've covered this, but I'll just go through it real quick. You know, we have this intent statement, and really, the existing intent of the non-conformity section is to recognize that these were permitted at one point, you know, legally permitted at one point in time, but the zoning codes changed, and now they're prohibited or, you know, restricted in some way underneath the, the existing zone that they're in. And, you know, the, the zoning code intends to continue to allow until they're removed, destroyed, or lost by time, but not to encourage their survival. And then it puts, you know, has the intent that they shouldn't be enlarged, expanded, you know, pretty much saying that, you know, they, they should just be allowed to, you know, end with, you know, die with time, and then something new would conform to the regulations will go in their place. And, you know, if you recall, last time, we had gone through multiple examples of other jurisdictions that are a lot more lenient than we are on these provisions. A lot of other jurisdictions allow, you know, if it's some destroying of the structure by no fault of the owner, then usually it, it can be rebuilt. You know, if it's a flood, fire, some other natural disaster that destroys it, then they allow the, the rebuilding of the structure. And so, you know, that's pretty much across the board, and, you know, the jurisdictions that we looked at were a lot, you know, more lenient than we were on this. And this section has been carried over from zoning code to zoning code. It's probably, you know, 30, 40 years old. So I, I think that, you know, it's a good time to take a look at it, and we probably should have taken a look at it, you know, when we started running into problems with financing of, of banks and everything. So I've got a draft ordinance for your consideration here, and I just took a stab, first stab at it, but going through, I think there's maybe a couple more sections that may need some tweaking. But just, just to start out, in the non-conforming structures category, you know, right now, it says that it can't be enlarged or altered in any manner which increases its non-conformity. But any structure portion thereof may be altered to decrease its non-conformity. I don't know that we need to, to kind of group those into, you know, either it can be enlarged as long as it doesn't increase it. But, you know, of course, it may be altered to decrease it. I don't think we need that statement there. Provides a little bit more flexibility. You know, we've always viewed that, you know, if you have, like, I think the example that I had given before was the office here, and, you know, the way our current code's written, you know, this is not meeting setbacks because it's right up to the property line. There's a 10-foot front setback and a, a 10-foot street side setback. And so, you know, in our view, this wouldn't be increasing the non-conformity to do an addition that met the 10-foot setback out here, you know, around this area. But the, the way this, this reads, you know, it, it would appear that that would be the case, but then you go to the repairs and maintenance section at the end, it states that the, the volume of the structure existing when it became non-conforming should not be increased. And so, you know, it kind of, the, the non-conforming structures section seems to leave it open in order to be able to allow that, but then it kind of pigeonholes you in the repairs and maintenance section to say that it can't increase the area or the volume of the structure. So, you know, what I've done is, is taken that, the, the end of the first paragraph out, and then under, number two, talks about the, the destruction, you know, should such non-conforming structure, non-conforming portion of a structure be destroyed? And it used to read, by any means, to an extent, a more than 70% of the replacement cost of the whole structure at the time of destruction. It shall not be reconstructed except in conformity with the provisions of the zoning code. So, you know, any type of destruction, whether it be fire, flood, natural disaster, you know, whether maybe the, the owner tears it down, it has to be constructed in conformance with the current rules. A lot of the other jurisdictions specified that, well, if the owner destroys it, then yeah, we want him to, to rebuild it underneath the, the current zoning laws. But, you know, if it's no fault of the owner, fire, flood, natural disaster, then, you know, it, they, they allow it to be rebuilt. So I, I've inserted that in there to, to say that, you know, if it's destroyed, no fault of the owner, to an extent, more than 70%, so retain the 70% language, and then go on to say that it may be reconstructed, having the same zoning non-conformities, but no more than exist, as existed before the damage occurred. So, you know, just, just provide a little bit more flexibility in those circumstances where it's no fault of the owner that it gets destroyed.
Mike?
Yeah.
With that, with, leaving that 70% in there, first of all, I like the change, I think that makes a lot more sense, but leaving the 70% in there, what happens if it's only destroyed 50 or 60%? Given how that's written?
Yeah.
And I would assume that they could repair it to what it existed, but the, but that suggests that it has to be destroyed that much before you can reconstruct.
Yeah, you know, I, I was thinking a little bit about that myself, and, you know, I, I think that if we were just sticking to the non-conforming structures section and we didn't have the repairs and maintenance, because I think that, you know, after reading the repairs and maintenance, you know, it would say that, you know, the kicker here is probably non-bearing walls, so it doesn't include bearing walls. So obviously, if you have some type of fire that destroys 50% of a structure, you're gonna be getting into some bearing walls that need, that need replacement. So, you know, it's just a, you know, in looking at destruction, I think some of them were general, you know, just said destroyed. And we could go the general route, but, you know, sometimes it's hard to determine when something is destroyed or not. I mean, with a car, the insurance adjuster comes out and says that it's a total wash, and maybe that's what happens with, you know, structures that, when, you know, insurance comes out, or the, the building inspector comes out and says that it, you know, pretty much can't be rebuilt, then, you know, we decide that that, that's destruction.
Maybe we look at that and see if they have a rule like that, go with something like that. The industry standard, I guess.
So I can research that a little bit more, you know, that, that was something that crossed my mind as well. But that, that's just, you know, what we have right now is the 70% of the replacement cost of the whole structure at the time of destruction, so.
I have a question. So let's say that 70% of my structure is destroyed, and I rebuild that 70%, but then there's, but then the other part that wasn't destroyed gets destroyed, and I get to rebuild that too? At another time?
Well, I think you, you just get to rebuild if it meets the 70% of the replacement cost of the whole structure. So, you know, 70% of the replacement cost is gonna be quite a bit. I mean, that, that would pretty much be the.
Whole thing.
Whole thing, yeah.
Okay. And you only get to do that once?
You only get to do it if it meets the, the 70% of the replacement cost. So, you know, if, if you have a, some type of destruction that, you know, destroys 30% of it, and there's no way that you can fix it, and you've got to tear it down, then you've got to rebuild to what the current zoning is, you know, if you, gets destroyed 30% and you can fix it, then, you know, there it is.
I'm not sure I understand the validity of this percentage.
I'm having a hard time with that too, because it looks to me like why have the percentage at all? You know, why not just say that?
I mean, take that little office building that's non-conforming. Okay, they have a fire. I don't care whether it's a little fire or a big fire, do they get to replace as they, the building they had? And what's the percentage got to do with it? I mean, you know, there comes, if we're talking about something, not a building, if you're talking about a car, we, we run into the problem of to fix it costs more than it's worth, blah, blah, blah. But in a building, if you, if it's an office building, I could see that little lawyer's office over there having a fire in it. 25% of the, of a few walls get burned and ruined, and you have to fix it back up.
Well, it seemed like it made sense when, when you hit that 70% and you weren't allowed to build back if.
Yeah, if you.
And now it makes no sense to me. Or I'm having a.
Yeah, if you read through it and look at the original, and, and yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's meant to be the, the threshold for when it, it's allowed to be, you know, when it's required to be torn down. But now that we're, you know, pretty much changing it, then I don't know that it would, you know.
Now you can tear it down and rebuild it.
We would need that in there.
Yeah. And you can tear down the remnants of 30% and rebuild it the way we're rewriting it. So why even bother having the percentage?
Sure. It seems that you could take out, if you took out the entire section two under structures, everything is covered under the first one, under repairs and maintenance, ordinary, you can enlarge your non-conforming use, you can do ordinary repairs and repair or replace certain elements of it. Of course, I guess then you, you get to the issue of if, if you do have a fire, flood, your non-bearing walls are gonna be, well, that would cover that. You could, you could, you can repair or replace a, I'm sorry, bearing walls are left out of that.
It seems like we need to be explicit about the fact that if it's a total loss, you can still rebuild, if that's what the intent is.
It seems like anywhere from zero to 100, it sounded like you can rebuild, so.
Right, it sounds like that's what we're trying to get at, is if it's non-conforming, you can rebuild.
But if it's not the owner's fault, then they can rebuild.
Yeah. You can do ordinary repairs and maintenance, you can repair, replace certain things. If it's destroyed to any extent and you need to rebuild, you can do that as long as you don't enlarge the non-conforming use.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we, we could keep it the way it is and just eliminate the, you know, should such non-conforming structure, non-conforming portion of a structure be destroyed by no fault of the owner, fire, flood, natural disaster, et cetera.
Period.
Yeah, it, it may be reconstructed, having the same zoning non-conformities, but no more, so we just take out, you know, this, this whole sentence right here about 70% of the replacement cost of the whole structure, so.
If I'm a lender, I'm worried about that 70% number and thinking, well, what if it's less than that, and then I'm gonna have, I'm gonna be hesitant to lend on that property.
Sure, yeah.
Because it's unclear there where I'm gonna.
So I have another picky question. I mean, no fault of the owner, what does that really mean? I mean, what if the owner, what if the building has an electrical problem and it starts a fire? I mean, it's not, is it literally the owner going in there and, you know, creating arson or, or something like that, that we mean by no fault? Or what, I mean, usually there's some negligence on the part of a building owner when something burns down. Not all the time, but sometimes.
Well, I mean, I guess that, that'd be the police's job to figure out if there's some type of criminality there. But usually no fault just means that the owner's not getting a bulldozer and, and hiring somebody to tear it down.
Or investigation.
Intentional, so it's not an intentional. So in a sense, it could be their fault, but it's not their intention.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, that's bothering me too. So I don't know if that's worth worrying about, but.
Well, it might be worth, whatever we come up with, running it by a local lender and saying, is, does this fix a problem? Does this fix the problem with, with people getting financing?
Sure. And then the other section that's given us trouble is the non-conforming uses and structures in combination. So, you know, right now, we have the first statement that says, no existing structure devoted to a use not permitted in the zoning code in the zoning district in which it's located shall be enlarged, extended, constructed, reconstructed, moved, or structurally altered except in changing the use of the structure to a use permitted in the zoning districts to which it's located. And then I had proposed to add another sentence at the end of that, except when the destruction of an existing structure and use in combination occurs by no fault of the owner, the structure and use in combination may be replaced to its original size and use prior to the destruction. So this is, you know, language that was similar in quite a few of the other jurisdictions that, that would allow, you know, this is the major problem of the duplex in the single-family zone.
Right.
And then the rest of the section, I, I don't know that, we can take a look at it, but I don't know that, you know, we have any issues. This one talks about, you know, it, non-conforming uses may be extended through any part of the building, pretty much as long as, you know, we have the existing building footprint and allows those non-conforming uses to be extended throughout that, that building. And then this statement's pretty much saying that it has to conform, you know, if it's replaced, it has to be, it has to conform to the current regulations of the zone that it's located in, and that the non-conforming use can be resumed. And then we have this clause that talks about abandonment. So if you, you know, sits vacant or abandoned for six consecutive. or abandoned for six consecutive months or 18 months during a three-year period, it has to be converted to a use that's, you know, within the underlying zoning district. Haven't had too many issues with this one. Number five seems a bit of a redundancy, you know, we've got, and then especially if we're going to eliminate the 70% of the replacement cost. So, goes to say that where nonconforming use status applies to a structure and premises in combination, you shall be discontinued if the structure is removed or destroyed. You know, I think we already say that in number one here, so I was going to propose to get rid of at least the first sentence there, and then, you know, if we're going to eliminate the, the 70%, we can just probably eliminate all of number five.
I just, I want to just mention something, I'm going back to the little office.
Uh-huh.
Over the years, we've talked about neighborhood businesses, and most of us know some place in some city, whether it's Boise or Spokane or wherever, where there are neighborhood businesses, and these businesses are built like little towns, they actually go right up to the property line. They're a little barber shop and, or a little grocery store, whatever it was, that could be built, and you realize that what we've managed to do, not we at this table, but we in America, have outruled, ruled out common citizens deciding that they'd like a little neighborhood, something, because we say, oh, you have to have a 20-foot setback, 30-foot setback, because that's a way, this is a pro-suburban house deal, but if you go to these wonderful new or reviving areas in any city in America, you'll find that little, that little place right there, that turns out to be a beautiful little coffee shop, maybe the lawyer dies, and somebody makes it into a coffee shop, it's gorgeous, and you add another little building, next thing you know, you've got a little neighborhood business. All I'm saying to us is, do you see how we've ruled out citizens deciding what they would like in a, in a neighborhood, and we've scared them so much, but yet, we talk about this as a nonconforming thing. This wasn't a nonconforming thing, he was just building, who, he or she was building a building like anybody in downtown Moscow would build, like anybody in any city would build, just a cool little building, and who knows, maybe a little business district gets formed here. But by talking about it, that's, oh, it's nonconforming, you must be a bad person, we're going to have to take you out to the woodshed, and, hello. And yet, we've tried to figure out how to start little businesses, little neighborhood businesses here and there in Moscow, and failed fairly miserably with it. So, anyway, I just, it's kind of off the topic a little bit, but I hate talking about that as a nonconforming use. Nonconforming to what? To life, or to the fact that somebody down the street, we decided we needed a 30-foot setback?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, you're right, and especially in a place where you've already got plenty wide setback from the street, just because of the sidewalk and the...
I'm just thinking about, I don't know how many of you know the Rockwood Bakery and Coffee Shop in Spokane up in, on...
Yeah, it used to be a grocery store.
You know, and it was an old grocery store or something, and it's turned out to be, it's so popular, and people just come from miles around to this wonderful nonconforming thing, you know? And I, it worries me, and I don't know how to fix it, I don't, because of our, because we've locked in our ordinances so well to protect every little suburban house, or, in my case, my own house, God, look at my setback. What if everybody's setback from the yard 50 feet the way my house does? What's that all about?
You could put a grocery store in your front yard.
You can have an airport.
Anyway, it's just a little philosophical issue that I think is, as we, as our town grows, and we begin to think of potential other neighborhoods, especially as a high school starts getting built out there past government property, you know, and they'll be, they'll want a little pizza place next to it, or a thing, or a place to buy a coffee. I mean, you know, the kids from downtown, they don't have that problem, our downtown high school doesn't have that problem, but something's going to happen to begin to form a, that neighborhood, even, even with the East Side Market, we could begin to think of that in other ways as well. Anyway, it's just something to sleep on.
Well, I agree with you. I mean, I think that this one makes sense, I think it's in the context, so this is motor business, because you got Troy Highway right here. So, you know, we had looked at, you know, maybe a couple of years ago, we did the amendment to the, we were looking at motor business, because we had the council goal about expanding main, you know, the perceived perception of Main Street north on 95 there. And we looked at, maybe, you know, that was one of the things, you know, because you have that transition at A Street from central business to motor business, and we've got that whole block all the way up to Han Rental, that is right up to the property, and majority of the buildings are right up to the property line. So, we were thinking about, well, what if we just eliminate the setback in motor business, so you have a zero setback? And, you know, what we ended up, we were looking at other properties, and the majority of these are along highways, you know, that was kind of an anomaly, that that block was in motor business. But when we're looking at change in the zone, we were going to create too many nonconformities, so we were pretty much stuck with the motor business zone. And, you know, looking at all the rest of the properties that are primarily along the highway, and even though this would seem like a neighborhood-type business, it's still in motor business, even though, you know, these are really the motor business properties, the Car Wash, Napa Auto, you know, those are all motor business. And when you looked at a 10-foot setback on a highway, it looked like it was right up to the property line. So, we thought that it was good to have that 10-foot setback, but what we ended up doing was, we've got that alternate front yard setback that lets you average the two adjacent structures, and so, you know, if we had, this was in the middle, and we had a structure here that was up to the property line, and a structure here, well, we could just say that the average of these is right up to the property line, and we could use that. And we also did the, I think it's 60 or 70% of the structures on the block, so let's say that, you know, you were trying to build something up here, and you had this house, and you had this house that was set way back, but the rest of them were right up here on the street, you could take a look at, you know, and take an average of all the houses on that block, and that would give you your setback. And so, that's how we kind of, you know, figured that one out. You know, I don't know, we could, if you think that, you know, we should go a little bit further and allow extent, you know, the addition of not meeting the setback, but being the same building wall, you know, we could possibly do that through a conditional use permit?
Well, I think that the problem with averaging the pattern is when you have residential, and then all of a sudden you have a commercial neighborhood business, because it's going to not follow that pattern, but it makes sense not to be setback, more than houses do in that particular case. And so, I think we're going to always have that problem of the patterns not being that useful, except when you're doing a residential infill, or, you know, I remember doing a porch addition where the setback wasn't clear, and it was like, yeah, just average all the distances on the street and...
Yeah, given this situation...
Yeah.
It would seem to me to be undue, risk, a kind of a bad law, in a way, to force some kind of a setback. Given this street, we can just look at it and see that no one's living there, it's not harming anybody's lifestyle.
And it blocks out all the junk behind it, quite frankly.
This whole, this whole block, it's so close to the highway that it's quite a different thing. I was really thinking about little buildings that, you know, used to be on the trolley line or something in some other cities, but I would hesitate.
But transforming a more suburban condition is a different animal.
Yes, it is.
And, yeah.
Sure, sure it is, there's no doubt about it, but there ought to be some tool for staff to be able to make a sane decision, and not just look at the ordinance and just blindly follow the ordinance, because this, nobody's going to put their house...
Well, yeah, I think the situ, the context-sensitive decision would be a conditional use permit. You know, that's pretty much what we've got available.
I think so.
And so, we could possibly open it up to that, to say that, well, you can, you know, you have to meet setback, you're able to expand and do an addition, you have to meet current setbacks. If you want to continue the existing setback line, then you can apply for a conditional use permit.
I think that's a good idea.
They can review the context of the situation and...
Yeah, because we're never going to find consistency in all these situations, so conditional use really helps.
You would have, announce it in the neighborhood anyway, for people, if there's a conditional use.
Yeah, it'd be, everybody'd be within 600 feet, so they'd be noticed. So, yeah, we could look at that.
Keep guys from dying. Anything over 50, they have to use that.
All right, well, that's pretty much all I have in the nonconformities, unless somebody else has any other questions or thoughts.
Just one comment in the discussion, and then in looking through this again, it seems like if the intent is that we, we want to make it so that people can rebuild a nonconforming use, so they get financing, it would be really simple to say, in all of these, if you were, if you were using it before the zoning code changed, you can continue to use it that way, as long as you don't expand it. Including repairs, kind of a, yeah, including repairs and replacement.
Yeah, I think I agree.
Any other comments? Okay, item number eight, minor PUD amendment draft ordinance, Mike's going to present.
I still think minor should be a minor amendment, not a minor PUD.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's a minor, yeah.
This is just really what we had last time, we had taken a look at it, and I think that the only comment was to have, you know, we have these two types of PUDs, ones that are just on one entire piece of property, like the identity development that we saw a few meetings ago on South Cuplet, that just goes to Planning and Zoning Commission, and the commission gives the final approval. The ones that are associated with subdivision plats end up going through council, and so the Type 1 PUD is the one that just final decisions, planning and zoning, Type 2, final decisions, council. And so, the only question was, or the only comment was, the way we had it structured initially was to say that Planning and Zoning Commission would, or the body exercising jurisdiction over the original PUD approval may approve, approve with conditions, or deny a major PUD amendment. So, that was saying that, well, for a Type 1 PUD, it'd obviously be Planning and Zoning Commission, and then for a Type 2, it would go straight to council without giving, planning and zoning, giving a recommendation. So, that was the only comment I received last time, so I had gone in and attempted to make that change. So, under the amendment procedure, I clarified to say that Planning and Zoning Commission may approve, approve with conditions, or deny a major PUD amendment request for a Type 1 PUD following one public hearing. And for a major PUD amendment of a Type 2 PUD, Planning and Zoning Commission shall conduct one public hearing and forward a recommendation on a city council, who shall conduct one public hearing and approve, approve with conditions, or deny the amendment request.
I like that.
I like that.
Yeah. That's good. That's good.
And then, unless anybody else has any comments or concerns, we're planning on getting this scheduled for public hearing at next meeting, if we can make the timeframe.
Yeah, no, I think that looks really good.
Okay.
So, before we adjourn, Les McDonald is coming to our next meeting, and so, there was a suggestion, actually, from Catherine, that I thought was a really good one, she said, why don't you look, take a look at the multimodal transportation report, it's 500 pages long, it's online, so, chapter three deals specifically with land use, and it's only 10 pages, right? So, we thought that might be a really good shared reading, just for us to read, so we can ask intelligent questions of where the city is, you know, in their thinking with this study, when Les comes to talk to us. Does that sound good to everyone?
Good.
All right.
A good excuse to read that.
Yeah, 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 you don't have to read the whole thing unless you've got, unless you have insomnia.
I downloaded it, it's not a very big file.
It's on the online, so we can go read it.
It's somewhere on the city website.
But Mike, you were going to excerpt it out?
Yeah, we're going to have a link, and it's working on a link with the shared readings, so we should have that posted in the next day or two.
Awesome.
So, the other one's 50 meg's or so, and this one's about two or three, so...
I'll send you the link when I get it up.
Okay.
Great, okay. So, did we hit, let's see, I think we know what we're doing on September 14th meeting, sounds to be a pretty big agenda, and other than that...
So, I got it in the mail today from Tammy Gray, she's administrative assistant up for Streets and Fleets, and then there's an invite, the City of Moscow, along with Intermountain Flurry Seal, would like to invite you to come see the AR chip installation on Monday, the 29th, this one out to the city membership. So, there's going to be a presentation here at 9:30, and then everybody's going to ride to the site to go see the chip seal, and this is really exciting, the fleet, street guys have been talking about this, because it's trying to maintain the streets. So, if you can go, come to the 9:30 presentation, and then go see the seal, I'm in school, so I can't, but I'll ask Victoria to go, and then if you can go, it'd be really good. So, they're just doing a short presentation, and then you're going to ride out to the site to see a demonstration of the chip seal that they're doing on the streets. And this is pretty neat, because people are coming down from Coral Lane...
Say the day again.
Monday, the 29th, 9:30.
Meeting, meeting here.
Yeah, short presentation, and then off to go see the demonstration, and I, you know, I think it's just the cool stuff.
Yeah, I wish, I would love to go, I'm going to be out of town next week, but that, but anybody else, thank you for sharing that. Okay, adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.